Call this meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones and stand for the implication given by Councilmember Taylor.
Please follow me, our Lord's Prayer, followed by the pledge. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from it. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Any public comments?
Yes.
Should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Please use the podium. State your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. The press conference chair, council not engaging with debate, with the speaker. First bow, thirty seconds left. Second bow, please rest it out before we have to stop. Follow your first person.
John Roach.
John Roach, Grandview Terrace. Just two questions. One, I see you've got a presentation on the lead line study coming up. My question would be, if they find lead lines, say, under your lawn going into the house, will you be mandated to replace them? And if you are mandated, who has to pay? Maybe that question could be answered. Maybe it's too early. The other is, years ago, the city allowed Genesee County Jail to block off the exit to Porter Ave with big chain link fences. It was an emergency area in case a fire broke out in the jail. You had somewhere to put the inmates. It was a smart move. Now that the inmates are going to get moved to the new jail, do we get that back? Are we going to open up that access road now so people can go back and use it to get the Porter Ave? Right now, it looks like the county's just using it for secure storage. You see a bunch of cars there. I'm not sure when the inmates are supposed to move to the new jail, but it should be in a month or something. So personally, I'd like to see the city get back the access. Thank you.
That's all.
Rachel, I think that property is owned by the county. They bought those houses and knocked them down when they put that.
I would have to check on Porter Ave, but I can't answer lead lines. So we have to make multiple attempts with homeowners to let them know they do have a lead line. We have to provide Brita pitchers, and then the city, the final rules and regulations haven't been totally issued, but more than likely, the city will be responsible and have to remove lead lines on the public and private side.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I remember when they built that jail, there were several houses there that the county required. So I believe that's their property, and it's just, there's no reason that they should, we should force them to let that be an access behind their building. I mean, if they open it up, fine. If they don't, it's their property. They can do whatever they want with it, I guess. So whatever their use of that building is going to be, it may be part of their plans, but if you happen to run into Mr. Landers, if you can just inquire as to what their thoughts are on that.
Sure.
Anybody else think of a comment? Communications.
Fordham Drive Block Party.
The Fordham residents submitted an application for a block party on Saturday, August 17th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. For, it's on Fordham Drive between Holmes and Eugene Street, for a picnic-style gathering for.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, next one.
The Batavia Business Improvement District submitted their application for their box car derby this Saturday, August 17th, at 10:00 a.m. This will be on elicit Ave for the box car race.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, continue.
Cornerstone Church requested to hold their community outreach picnic on Saturday, August 24th, in Austin Park, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. They will be giving out food, clothes, and hot dogs to the public.
Questions or concerns? Okay, continue.
Just Kings will be holding their backpack giveaway on Saturday, August 24th, at 1:00 p.m. in Williams Park, with free food, backpacks, and haircuts. They will also have games and a DJ.
Questions or concerns on that? Okay, continue.
Eli Fish Brewing Company requested to hold a welcome party for the Wings Over Batavia on Thursday, August 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Jackson Square.
Okay, continue. Any questions on that? Go ahead.
Eli Fish also submitted an application for their 20th anniversary concert on Saturday, September 7th, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Jackson Square.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay. Thank you. Next city council meeting will be held Monday, September 9, 2024, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, on July 15th, I had the honor of attending an induction ceremony, I would think you would call it, at the New York State Association of Chiefs of Police. Our very own Chief Sean Hyvush was sworn in as president of their association, which covers all of New York State. It's quite a big honor. I had the honor of supporting him via the city and city council, and I gave a little speech. Sean gave an excellent speech as well, and it's a really nice honor for our chief to achieve. And he has ultimate access to all their resources anyway, but now he's leading the charge and planning conferences. It's going to take a little time, but it's a big honor for him to have that, to achieve that. Anything you'd like to say more about it, Sean?
Just thank you very much for the support. It is an honor. It is a great group of individuals. We try to do as much as we can across the state to support law enforcement and police chiefs specifically. I think we have, you know, we've made some ground over the last few years, and it's an honor to, you know, just to be recognized.
And that covers chiefs and command officers everywhere, anywhere from New York City, Long Island, et cetera, all the way to Buffalo and in between. And also, our honor guard was there to do the flag ceremony. They did a really great job on that, too. So it was a, that was a very nice event. It was a pretty, pretty prideful day to be having, hearing Batavia mentioned in Buffalo amongst such leaders of our state. So it was a nice honor.
Our retired fire captain, Mullin, was bagged by around day one.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that, too.
Really great job.
So it was a really cool event, so I just wanted you guys to know about it. And I think I sent you guys an email.
Absolutely, yeah.
So thank you, Sean, for putting the time and getting that on.
Thank you.
Presentations. The first one, strategic plan. Just joking, because I knew you wanted to do this. You're first.
So we have Mike App with us from.
I wasn't even saying something about, I want to go first, or I don't want to.
No, no, no. We've. I was placed first. I didn't volunteer first.
I wanted to harass him.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So they're going to move. We'll drop the screen.
Okay.
And it'll just be a few minutes while we get the technology working. I'll just do a quick introduction, Mike.
I don't need any more stitching.
As you guys know, we've received Department of Health grants to do, on the public side, pot-hauling across the city. That occurred for about two and a half years ago. We were able to locate some lead lines in the city, but it was very hard because we thought there'd be an area where we'd find many of them, but we had to go to multiple different areas. And it was very costly and intrusive to the property owners, having to dig and look for lead lines. So Mike's going to tell us a little bit about new technology that's come out and a bid that his company was awarded and is getting ready to get started on. Once we do have this data and information, we'll be able to use predictive modeling to round out the rest of our report and submit it on time in mid to late October to the federal government, and then continue to move on as we talk about lead. Every quarter, basically, here at the city, we continue to make progress. So Mike, we'll get that set up, and if you want to introduce yourself?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. Council members, my name is Mike App. I am the Executive Vice President of Electriscan. We are a tech company based out of Sacramento, California. I'm present here tonight with Mackenzie App with Emmy Simpson, who's one of our partners. We, Mackenzie lives in Williamsville, I live in Syracuse, so while we're California companies, we, you know, we're based all over the United States, so. What we're going to talk about is the lead and copper rule. It's nothing new to any of us upstate. It is something we've all been dealing with forever, because historical upstate New York, as well as New England, Mid-Atlantic, as well as industrial Midwest, we have lead. We have it everywhere. In Syracuse, we have it in our water system and the mains. We also have it in our service lines. We have a sewer system. So it's something we're just very used to. The reason they use lead was, to be totally honest, is that nothing happens to it. Now, that's one of those things that, you know, unfortunately, reality now has come back to get us a little bit, but, you know, but this is why we're all trying to get rid of it. And obviously, when we talk about lead, when we talk about Flint, Flint was the genesis of the entire thing. Flint, you know, was basically an argument over rates of water. Six people lost their life from it. They're not the only community that's had a problem with lead contaminating water service lines. But basically, according to the EPA, the bipartisan infrastructure law that came out in '21, we're hunting for somewhere near between nine and 12 billion of these things all over the United States. Now, in the state of New York, as the most recent EPA survey, we believe there's about half a million of these lead service lines all over the state. Now, I'm going to use a little bit of a caveat with that. The city of New York is not included yet in that number. So once the city of New York comes in, that number will go dramatically up. But a half a million in over 60 some odd counties, you know, Batavia, Syracuse, Buffalo, you know, out, we're working as high up in the, in the St. Lawrence River in Pottstown, Warwick, all the bedroom-type communities, we're all hunting for this. The good news is that Department of Health, through the bipartisan struggle, has been passing out a lot of grants. Batavia has one, that's what we're going to utilize here. So what is it we're trying to find? What we're trying to find is this, is that the, we're trying to determine all the pipe material from the main all the way into the house. It's a long way. It could be as much as 20, 30, 40, 50 feet of different material. That's what we're trying to discover. And as previously Batavia had done, you guys have done pot-hauling or hydroexcavation, which is digging holes in the ground to get a look at the pipe itself. Now, it's very, very expensive. It's very disconcerting to business owners. It's very disconcerting to residents, because we have to dig a hole that's eight to 10 foot deep, 18 inches wide, in everybody's house. People tend to get a little upset, as we would expect. We're going to use a methodology that doesn't have us digging at all. We're not going to impact anybody. What we are going to do is we're going to hit an electrical current. We have to get access to everybody's house, the people that were participating in the surveys, and we're going to send a small probe, roughly about a third of an inch down the line itself. We're going to admit a known value of electricity. And as it passes through the pipe wall, it gives us that data back by the millisecond and millimeter. So if we change materials, we see that in real time. And that's important to Batavia and all the communities, because many times, we don't always find one material. We find multiple different materials. There ain't copper in the house, and then it transitions to something else. The reason that's important is that we're going to be able to inform Batavia specifically of what houses we've stumbled across that have it, and how much there is, and where exactly it's located in the lawns. That's important, because now when you guys go through a construction phase, you're not pulling out perfectly good pieces of copper or metal. You're only going to be able to limit the work to the air-specific area where the damage, where the pipe actually happens to be. So not every lawn can get 30, 40 feet of new line. You're going to be able to do a far more faster economic methodology. The unique thing about our technology is that the data's back to us within about three to five minutes. We're reading the data in milliseconds and millimeters. We send everything up to the cloud. We go through Amazon Web, over in our critical age to our Tableau system, the Batavia will have access to. The data will be back in real to us in real time. So while I'm still in that house, doing all the things which DOH has asked to do, I already know the answer to the question. So when it comes to us leaving information, or leaving filters, or anything like that, that's all going to be taken care of right then and there, so that the customers know the city of Batavia is taking care of them, and you're moving forward on what the plan's going to be, which will be a rehabilitation, renewal program, as the money starts coming back in. This is how the data looks on the graphs. One of the things you'll see on the bottom right corner is you'll see galvanized in lead, galvanized in silver, red is in the color, lead's in the color red. That's actually a requirement that was asked for from Department of Health. They want someone to understand, hey, if I look at these graphs, Mike, I'm not an electrical engineer, can you tell me this is? So we put simply a color trap. By, based on the material, depends on the color. If it's copper, it's gold. If it's plastic, it's blue. If it's galvanized, it's gray, and if it's lead, it happens to be red. So it's very easy to understand, very easy to see, but what we typically find here in New York, in upstate New York, is if there's going to be a change in material, we're going to find it in the first three minutes, or first three feet, excuse me, as we transition underneath the wall of the house or through the wall of the house, if we're going to find it's going to be around the outside of the wall. But we'll know that immediately. We'll be able to document it, get that information back to the city and GHD engineering, so that the inventory can then be submitted up to the state of New York. The unique thing about the inventories is this, that this inventory is not going to be a once and done. This is going to be a yearly process over the next 10 to 15 years. As Batavia continues to refine their inventory, as Batavia is waiting for funds to come in, they will then, you'll constantly be updating it to where the goal at the end of this thing is Batavia and every community in the United States report, we no longer have any lead left. That's the purpose of this whole thing. So this is a long haul process that we're all in the process of getting into. We have a full manual that, you know, is here. We're meant, Batavia's been provided. This is what all the crews operate under. The crews that work for us are certified contractors, my own staff that lives up in Pottstown. Emmy Simpson's company will be here, at Eliminate Two may be here, but all of our technologists are very used to working in basements and the environment and the plumbing situations we have here in upstate New York, and that's one of the things we'll be dealing with specifically and getting it taken care of. The one thing we want to stress to everybody, no homeowners can be paying for any of our services for us to commit. This is all being taken care of through grant. The homeowner.
Mike, I got to stop you.
Yes.
It's actually city reserve funds.
City reserve funds, I apologize.
No grant for this, however, we are applying for a grant once we find them for replacement.
No, I appreciate that.
So council understands that we committed reserve funds to do this project.
And I thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
It's important, though, for the homeowners to understand, like I said, yes, it's coming out of reserve funds, but this doesn't cost them anything on the front end for us to do. One of the things that's important to this is the inventory, the GIS management. We contact, we schedule, we do the inspections. The testing replacement will happen next. But most importantly, this letter's about to go out on the map. This letter will go out to roughly between about 500 to 600 different residents that have been selected on a totally random basis. Again, because of data, AI data modeling, we need to get a representative sample, a blind sample across the entire city. This letter states the reason why we're doing it. Tom Phelps has signed it. There are three methodologies for a homeowner to contact us to schedule. First is a QR code. Use your phone, just like we do, you know, everything else, we pay, you can schedule right through there. Second is, there's a website, www.electriscan.com/Batavia. There's also a 315 area code. So we understand everybody has different levels of technology that they'll accept and want to use. The biggest thing is what we need is, we'll be working with Tom and the city to get as many of these people to immediately start scheduling work, so that we can get this data back, get it up to GHD for the data going forward. So the biggest thing is that Batavia has a small history of lead. We expect that. It's not anything unusual, but the biggest thing is we're trying to verify is where exactly it is, how pervasive it might be, and also work on the other side to get rid of it as well. So does anybody have any questions for me?
So Mike, the ultimate goal here is to test every structure that has public water supply by the end of this whole project, years down the road?
No. So there's two, there's a couple of different methodologies that everybody, different communities are utilizing. So one of the things Batavia is utilizing is you have enough dataset, asphalt drawings, record plans, stuff like that. The GHD is able to take different houses and sections of the city and start crossing them off. They were built after 1986, the plumbing code, permits. All of those types of data are very important. That's one of the things GHD has already gone through. That takes the whole population of only, or excuse me, Batavia, makes it far smaller. So what we're doing is we're looking for those populations that we don't have that information in. Now, the reason that's important is that I have a community such as the Village of Pottstown, they have no records. So we need to go through all 1,350 homes in the entire village. That's just the nature of the problem which we have. But what we're doing here is by the random sampling, GHD is going to be able to use mathematical statistical probability. It's an improved methodology to determine, they can make areas and decisions about what the whole flavor of Batavia happens to be. So the hope is, we're only going to go through about 400 to 500 of these, and that'll give us enough data to verify what'll happen after that. If something's completely different, then we may have to come back next year and continue along to try to refine the data model, but we won't know that until we get done with this work, and then GHD gets done with their actual work.
Is this all satisfied with the Department of Health has required?
Correct. Batavia is going to be able to make their first application of their inventory October 16th with no issues whatsoever. That's already, already in the process, and when the data comes in from here, we'll be simply added into it. And then, like I said, we'll wait for the model to be learned, taught after that, and see what come back and what we do next. So this is a, it's a long step process.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we need to blow it in.
My office, and you know where I left it? In my office. That's okay.
Next is the Fire Department Strategic Plan. Could you just give us a second, Paulie?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a row out right here by the speaker. There you go. Rachel, did you notice on the letter that's going out to the residents about the lead line, it says Village instead of City of the two? Why did that automated normally?
Where's the letter?
I don't have the letter. It was on screen, but number two. It says Village instead of City.
We'll get that next. We mailed our own letter out, asking all residents, first of all, telling them that the company would be coming around. It wasn't random samples. It was actually, GHD did particular homes where we believe lead could be, so if you do get a letter asking you to participate, we strongly advise it. Right now, there more than likely isn't going to be high levels of lead coming out of your water system. However, with the changeover to Monroe County Water, that is the issue. Not only is it good to get the lead out in general, but right now, you probably have enough scale built up where you're not, pieces of lead are not coming into your water. However, when we do the water and the source change, that's a whole different story, and we will need to have either chemical mitigation of the water coming in, or elimination of all lead pipes in the city to make sure all our residents are safe. So it's a, it's a process.
That's what happened in Flint, Michigan.
That's correct. They changed water source, the lead descaled, and then started breaking off and making people sick over time. We're not in that situation, luckily, but certainly want to follow the guidance and get as much lead removed from our homes as possible. Heavy metals are chemicals, and it's not good for you.
President, council members, so I handed out two documents to you guys. One is the summarized strategic plan, and the other is the OSHA update. I'm going to kind of briefly go over the strategic plan, because I want to spend a little more time on the OSHA update. As we go through the strategic plan, a lot of the beginning of it is informational. So the first page has some of the department history, going back to 1915. On the next page is the foundation for the future, which covers our mission, vision, the purpose, why we're here, and then some of the values that we operate off of. The next page is just an organizational chart, and this will be, once we fill these two positions that go to the Fire Academy next month, will be a full staffing. And then you get into the actual scope of service. So a lot of people think maybe we just do fire and EMS type services, but we actually do quite a bit more than that. And I broke down this program in some details as to what that actually is. And that includes everything from technical rescue stuff to community involvement, domestic threat planning, communication and response, fire prevention, EMS training, so on and so forth. And then on the next page is the SWAT houses, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I have to thank the Assistant City Manager for coming over and conducting this with us over at the Fire Department. This round was just with the fire officers and myself. We're actually just scheduled another one in September, where we're going to bring in some of the firefighters to get their perspective. But this is about two hours, we spent a little more than two hours discussing what their feelings were, as far as what the strengths were, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats. And they're all listed there. And then, from there, we go to the plan, goal, and process. And this just goes through how we get through to our priorities, from the process and timing to previous strategic plan, which I identified that there has not been one, focus groups, current, future projects, driving forces, then develop this strategic plan, and then we'll do a post-plan success evaluation. Then we get into some of the meat and potatoes. So originally, I had 10 priorities. We kind of narrowed that down to five, which are in the main strategic plan that you guys have in your emails, and then narrowed that down to the top three priorities for this summary. And this came from multiple fact-finding activities, analyzing the SWAT results. We want to concentrate on what moves the dial while keeping focus, make it clear and simple. Not a one-and-done. This is a fluid document that's going to change on a regular basis, and that's why I want to spend a little more time on the OSHA update, because that's going to have an effect on the strategic plan. But number one is making data-driven decisions on present and future staffing. Evaluate current training models for gaps and opportunities, and then update our policies and standard operating guidelines. The next page is where it's actually broken down a little bit farther. So number one, provide personnel dedicated to operating as incident commander, and relieve officers from filling multiple roles at the same time. Currently, we're looking through that to evaluate the need for potential Assistant Chief positions to operate on shift schedule, which could potentially provide a dedicated incident commander, along with additional incident safety officer, in turn improving safety for the community and members operating in the scene. And it'll additionally provide positions that would alleviate much of the administrative tasks that captains are currently completing, and it pulls them away from doing crew-related things. With the training and budget, our training budget and opportunities, so provide a training area within city limits. I know I've spoken before in budget meetings. Right now, a lot of training, we have to take guys off-duty to the training center at the county to conduct training. So the overall goal would be to create some type of training facility in the city. This is not a overnight thing. This is a multi-year, bit-by-bit type plan. Captain Herbert, who was our municipal training officer, is currently putting something together where we can identify a piece of land, what we have to do to clear it off, and then how we're going to go about that multi-year planning process and developing that, so that we don't have to go outside of the city. And maybe training that we might get done. And maybe training that we might get done once a year, they'll be able to do multiple times a year, because it'll be within the city limits. And then the third one is update policies and standard operating guidelines. Policies, procedures, and SOGs are guiding principles and processes for actions, communication and activities within the department. We want to create end-to-end process for updating policy, SOGs that streamline, modernize, and improves delivery of services. Right now, we have a fantastic, um, software program through Lockable that if we update a policy or procedure, it's set out to all the firefighters, they can acknowledge it on their phone, they read it, they send the acknowledgement, we get receipt of that, that they read it and that they understand it. So, things like that is just stuff that we want to look forward and try to plan for the future. Again, this was a very summarized version, you guys have the full version in your emails. And if there isn't any questions on that right now, switch over to the OSHA update. So at budget time last year, Rachel and I briefly mentioned the OSHA 1910.156 Emergency Response Standard that they are in the process of updating. It was a 608-page document that we threw down on the desk at that time, it was brand-new, I think we just found out the day of or the day before. Since then, I have spent extensive amount of hours going through that document to see what it would mean for us here. This was formerly known as the Fire Brigade Standard, passed September 12, 1980, hasn't been updated since then. OSHA decided that, um, it was gonna change it to the Emergency Response Standard, which incorporated all fire departments and EMS. Obviously, since 1980, we've made some significant improvements to firefighter safety, so a lot of the stuff we're already doing, it just hasn't been updated in a standard like that. After 9/11, all of the government agencies, including OSHA, were directed to strengthen their preparedness to respond to major incidents, uh, natural disasters and other emergency situations, and that's where OSHA discovered gaps in some of the protections for emergency responders. There's no question that emergency responders have a dangerous job. We all know that when we get into it, and there's no way you're gonna make that 100% safe. And there is a lot of things in this that are needed. Case studies in the document, you know, if you have time, you need something to read before you go to bed.
680 pages of reading.
680 pages. It's, the good thing about it was that every time they put in something that they want to change, they have case study to go along with why they're making that change. And their real-world on-duty deaths and how they resulted from a lack of safety, and what drove them to make that decision. And that was poor decision-making, lack of training, improper equipment, and other issues. This also covers all fire departments across the nation, volunteer, career, combination, everybody. Cancer has also become a huge risk for anyone in the fire service. Materials that burn are pretty much all made of synthetic material now, no more natural fibers. They give off much more toxic smoke, gets into our gear, we come out of the house, we rub our face, we take our mask off, and they're finding that we're getting exponentially higher rates of cancer among the fire service. That data is still coming out, because it only started collecting it the last few years. OSHA has identified and decided an update was needed to address the cancer, cardiac deaths, responder, mental health, and suicide, just to mention a few areas. The document itself, as I said, is 608 pages. It is an unfunded federal mandate, so there's no federal funding, state funding, anything that comes along with this. New York State is an OSHA-planned state governed by PESH, so what that means is, New York State will have to follow the proposed rule. PESH can come in and make it stricter, which they're not gonna do, but they can make it less strict. So however OSHA passes this, is what we're gonna have to follow. The other issue with it is that incorporates by reference 22 NFPA standards, which up until now were guidelines. These consensus standards are now gonna be turned into mandates, as they're referenced. Why does that matter to us? It would impose an extensive addition to administrative requirements. They estimate the, to add an additional 173 hours annually, which would be roughly five weeks of my schedule if you worked on nothing else all day with your own reference. I think that that's light, I think it's gonna be much more than that. But that includes development of emergency response plan for any type of incident we may encounter. Our response capabilities contain all written policies, procedures of the department, uh, contain a community vulnerability assessment, identifying response needs, what we have the ability to provide, and then we have to come up with how we're going to meet the needs if we can't provide that need. Written specific responsibilities and participation of each employee based on their role, capability, comprehensive risk management plan, and then we have to have some type of evaluation program to review all administrative programs annually. This also increases the liability to the AHJ, which would be you guys, as well as the individual officers. And it opens us up to potential suits, legal suits. Volunteers are gonna struggle with this, I mean, we're gonna struggle with this, career departments across the nation. So you can imagine volunteers are gonna struggle quite a bit more. And we rely on our mutually partners and volunteers that come in when we have a second alarm, to supply us with resources and manpower to help fight those fires. And then the other thing that was discussed, one of the classes that I went to on this, was that insurance may or may not cover incidents if we're not in compliance with this rule. Because if insurance can deny a claim, they're gonna deny a claim. Additionally, you're gonna have increased, increases in training requirements, um, for example, specific disciplines like water rescue.
Just so you know, Eric and I volunteer for additional help if you need in that respect.
That list is growing. Facility, preparedness updates, so the, we're pretty good with our recent remodel, we actually met a lot of these. One thing is creating a separate decontamination room that's away from everything else, that's only for after fires or hazmat, they can go in there and decon their equipment. Vehicle preparedness and operations, so under NFPA Incorporated by Reference, will need to be removed, or, uh, according to the, NFPA is Incorporated by Reference, apparatus will need to be removed from frontline in 15 years and completely from service in 25 years. Right now, there's an estimated 48-month build time on layers. That doesn't include the time to get a committee together and develop a plan for them. There's some stipulations on emergency incident operations, standard operating procedures, post-incident analysis, evaluation programs, and then they want an ongoing registry of vacant structures, and they also have to be labeled. Not only that they're vacant, but whether they're structurally compromised or not. Medically, uh, they want to establish a comprehensive occupational medical program. They want us to appoint a qualified medical officer to oversee the program, designate a department physician, complete comprehensive NFPA, or 1582 physicals every two years, or any time after being exposed to products of combustion more than 15 times. They don't stipulate what that means. So there's a lot of vagueness in some of this stuff. Currently, we pay just under $5,000 annually, and this would increase that to 35,000 to 54,000 annually. And then with these physicals, if they decide you need to have further testing, whether it's a chest x-ray or something else, it can snowball. Also, we have to provide ongoing medical monitoring for all members and their exposures, so we have to annotate any time someone's exposed at any scene, and make sure we're monitoring them continuously. And a comprehensible behavioral health program. Health and fitness, uh, they want to appoint a qualified, trained health and fitness leader, officer, or manager to oversee the program, provide fitness and exercise guidance and health promotion, educations and counseling to first responders, provide exercise training for first responders while on duty, and execute a fitness assessment at least every three years for all respondents. Vehicle maintenance, uh, vehicles in compliance with all applicable NFPA standards for testing, maintenance, and inspection requirements. I couldn't even tell you exactly what that's gonna look like for us, uh, that's something I have to dig into a little bit more. Incident operations, uh, safety addressed either by the incident commander or a designated incident safety officer. So right now, and this kind of goes in with the last one there, two-in, two-out rule, you have to have two people outside ready to go, prepared to go in the house for every two people, if, when you send two people in initially to a structural fire. If we run a minimum manning of six, that includes two drivers and then one dedicated incident commander, that's not enough people to send somebody into an, to a structural fire, because that only leaves three operational members. Crews must be rotated on prolonged incidents, but again, they don't specify what a prolonged incident is. Currently, um, it was pushed back to July 22nd, the comment period, that has ended. They were trying to push it back farther, they did not accept that, so it's going in front of an informal public hearing in November, and it could be implemented next calendar year. And throughout that, there's six months to two years to implement these, and they vary depending on what the specific topic is. On the last page, these are very rough estimates. Administrative, you're looking at a minimum of 15,000. Training costs, additional 10,000. Facility, 25,000. Medical, 32,000. Health and fitness, 12,000. Vehicle maintenance, could be upwards of 20,000. The operational changes, some of them are very difficult to calculate into monetary number, but just those alone total 114,000 plus. This does not include replacing ladder 15, which if this passes would be required to be replaced by 2030. And as I said, it's a four-year build time and a one-year committee time minimum. And those right now are between $2 and $2.3 million. Additionally, this is only a fraction of the true cost, this does not include any of the requirements in the 22 NFPA's. Anywhere that it is labeled as must or shall in those NFPA's, which is upwards of 1,500 times, is a requirement we will have to meet. Thankfully, we're very lucky as an officer corps that we do, and they are, um, ahead of the game on a lot of the stuff that's, that's out there, but I just wanted you guys to be aware that this is coming down the pipe. It's, it's going to pass in some form or fashion. I don't know what the end product's gonna look like, but there's a lot of weight behind it.
This comes at a time when it's tougher and tougher to recruit new firefighters. So just pile this on top of that.
Well, and I'd like to congratulate our chief, he's probably the only person that has actually read the 680-page document.
Multiple.
Multiple times across the state, but, um, he, he's been presenting to myself and Eric for the last six or seven months each time. He gets deeper into the document, and we really do appreciate you taking all the time to look through it, to understand it, to understand where we have vulnerabilities, liabilities that we may need to address as it moves forward.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, Chief, identifying vacant structures, is this why in some communities now you see, uh, plywood on the front of the building and there's a symbol on it showing?
Basically, uh, like a sign about this big.
Yes.
And it'll have a circle, or a circle with a line through it.
Right.
And one signifies it's vacant, one signifies it's structurally compromised.
Okay.
So that's to tell firefighters, hey, when you get here to a fire, it's structurally compromised.
I've seen some of it, just a diagonal bar on them, what's that?
Yeah, there's some different ones out there, but that's the intent.
I think one of the towns I was talking to said they want to know if the utilities are cut, if the power's cut and all that. So, yeah, it's a good idea though.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I'd believe that, because if you have squatters that somehow break in, and the sign says unoccupied, I mean, you still gotta go and do your checks anyway.
You have to always assume that there's somebody in the structure.
Yeah, you have to, yeah.
But it, that's something that, you know, the incident commander will have to take into consideration.
Right.
Risk versus reward.
Utilities and whatnot, I can see that being valuable to me, it's a big difference.
It also is a big billboard to everybody else that this house is vacant.
Right.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, so I mean, these are great ideas, but, you know, I'd like to see how the fire departments give their feedback and, and how this document eventually shakes out at the end.
I mean, I can tell you that there's, a lot of it is very good, but there's some of it that, OSHA said the average fire department's budget, and this includes volunteers as well, is $1.7 million. And that is just not even close to being accurate. You know, there's some rules, like you have to cordon off three perimeters at every incident. Well, there's no way I can dedicate manpower to running tape around three separate layers of perimeter at every incident, it's just not a feasible thing, so.
And then to clean up afterwards, and not to mention, you know, who's gonna police that, people wander around and do things.
And then there's a lot of areas that are very vague, such as the 15 exposures, and they've even admitted that's kind of an arbitrary number that they just came up with, you know. If you have to get an NFPA 1582 physical every time you're exposed to 15 carcinogens, it's, I mean, that could get expensive, so.
I mean, how do they know? What if it's 14? What if it's 10? I mean, how do you?
Well, you have to keep a registry of everybody that gets exposed. So if we go to a structural fire, I have to annotate and keep a document that says these individuals were exposed at this fire.
By exposed meaning just at the fire, or just?
Uh, supposed to be exposed to the product of combustion, but again, they don't specify what that is, you know.
That means something vague, like just, yeah, you were there and the wind shifted and some smoke flew about you.
I mean, technically, departments that don't have a plywood on system, that's an exposure when trucks are pulling in and out of the station.
Right.
There's a lot of stuff that still has to be ironed out, but I do know that this is gonna pass in some form or fashion, just don't know what the final product's gonna look like.
Hopefully, it's a little more workable than where it is now.
Under medical, designate a department physician.
Yeah, all that simply means is that, so the biggest issue is gonna be finding a doctor that completes a 1582 physical, because they're very, very, very in-depth, and a lot of doctors are like, I'm not even gonna sign off on doing that. But once we do, we'll identify that doctor as you are the fire department physician. That's who we're gonna send everybody to for their findings.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Verizon lease.
Yes, thank you, Council President. In 1995, the city entered into a lease with Verizon Wireless to attach cellphone antennas to the city's elevated water storage tank. As technologies have changed, Verizon has replaced the antennas periodically, and they're currently seeking permission to modify their current equipment. The Department of Public Works and the city's legal council have no issues with the proposed amended lease agreement.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in agreement to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Open container, GOR?
Yes, thank you, Council President. GOR would like to allow open container for two events on August 19th and August 26th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Bank Street parking lot across from their building. The event application was reviewed by staff, and we had no issues with the request at this time. However, because it is an open container, it has to go through city council for review and approval.
Questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, they're fully aware that the bank behind, the parking area behind Tompkins is private.
They are fully aware of that, yep. Yeah, we talked at length, because one parking lot clearing out and event setting up seemed problematic, but it looks like they've, they've made it work and talked to all the neighbors, and we haven't heard any complaints.
There's actually an event going on today that's not part of the application, because obviously we couldn't get it, get through council first. Um, and I drove by tonight, and they've definitely squared off, stayed off of the private property and have it pretty well maintained.
Meaning no open container tonight. The event was approved, um, through the email with council that I sent out, but they couldn't do open container till this came forward for your review.
So we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? City school lease, McCarter Park.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city is working with the school district to sell our former youth center building outside of the high school. However, we are keeping the community garden with a permanent easement, just to be clear, community garden stays. Uh, the city must get approval from New York State Parks and Rec to alienate the building from Parkland, as this transaction will not be finalized. Prior to our lease amendment terminating, we need to extend the lease, and I hand it to Eric to talk more about it.
Yeah, just briefly on that, the lease expires, uh, basically August 30th of this year, so we're gonna enter into one-year contract. So we're gonna enter into one-year contract, hoping that by the time that's over, we've handled the sale. If not, we can renew that for an additional one year, for up to three years. And if for some weird reason we're not there with the sale of property by then, we'll just be back here again to talk about it. But it's just an extension of the existing lease.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move the lease agreement to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Does it move? The firefighters grant?
Yes, thank you, Council President. City Fire has successfully again obtained another assistance to firefighters' grant for sixty thousand dollars. And Chief, can you explain to council what it will be used for?
So we're gonna be using this to purchase turnout gear for the two new hires, as well as pay for their academy costs, and then additional training for several other firefighters for Swift. And then also, we're replacing the exhaust system drops in the plyo vent system in the station.
Any questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that grant acceptance to tonight's business meeting? Does it move? Sidewalk bid of order?
So council will remember back to budget, so many months ago, we talked about sidewalks at length, and we reserved three-hundred thousand dollars for additional sidewalk projects. Scott Allen and his crew went out and took a look at various sidewalks across the city and identified with the help of our engineers, GHD, some areas that need to be replaced at this time. So we're calling the project a piecemeal sidewalk project. It won't be full sidewalks, as you see in most of our construction, but we identified places that we'd like repairs to be made. We put the project out to bid, we received several bids back, and the lowest bid was D&amp;H paving of Cheektawaga. The bid was for two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. And the city, like I said, had committed reserve funds up to three-hundred thousand. So between the construction, the engineering, and the construction inspection, we should come in right on budget for this project, and we'd like to award the contract to D&amp;H paving for the project tonight.
Any questions?
How much a block does that come out to?
One ninety-four.
It's approximately, it's very near to one hundred dollar a block.
Scotty. Years ago, we ended at one, when we were coming out almost three hundred dollars a block.
That's as an average, probably like four-inch walk in the six-inch driveways. Just as an average, it's near two hundred dollars a block.
Good, thank you.
So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Does it move? Wayfinding signage?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The City of Batavia bid a wayfinding signage project with some of our DRI funds associated with the Jackson Square project. The goal was to post signage that would bring people into Jackson Square in the bid district. Three bids were received, however, due to specifications of one bidder and the price of the two other bidders, I recommend the city reject the bids at this time. And we are currently going to reject the entire project so we can close out the Jackson Square DRI project.
What happens to the money?
The funds will actually be transferred to cover overruns on the city's center silo project.
Oh, okay.
Still pending state.
Pending state approval.
Any questions on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Genesee County Mental Health MOU?
Yes, the City of Batavia would like to collaborate with Genesee County Mental Health on a pilot program to provide embedded service-related services related to health. Grant funds from the opioid abatement settlement will be used to fund the pilot program. And Chief Hibbush, can you tell us more about that?
Hey, hey, hi.
Hanging out with Linda.
Okay.
So I have with me tonight Linda Tagli, Director of Mental Health Services and the, yeah, Director of Mental Health. So she's gonna help explain, I guess, the program and where the funding comes from. But as you are aware, and Chief Graham mentioned it tonight, mental health and officer wellness, public safety officer wellness has become an issue across the country. What we are doing with this funding is try to ensure that we kind of get up in front of the curve with some of this. We're gonna have some embedded services, if you will, for lack of a better term, within the police and fire departments, using some of this money that the state has so nicely given the county. And Linda has agreed to partner with us on that. So a lot of the programs that we're looking at doing are, they're not groundbreaking, but they're simple and to the point. We're gonna look at having some mental health check-ins with our officers and our firefighters. They'll be scheduled on a regular basis. I think the memo in front of you says every six months. Obviously, we're in August now, so we'll probably do one before the end of the year, then, you know, evaluate the program moving forward. Ride-alongs, so we'll have clinicians ride along with the officers and with the firefighters on staff to get a better understanding of their jobs and what some of the stressors are, and try to assist them with whatever that may be. A lot of it will be breaking down barriers between public safety officials and mental health staff. That's the biggest thing we have to overcome right now. Wellness workshops will be conducted periodically by Linda's staff, as well as crisis intervention as needed. So we're pretty excited about this program. We've been talking about it for a long time, doing everything that we can to support our officers and our public safety employees in the city. We think this is a huge step forward, and I want to thank Linda for cooperating and partnering with them. And I'll let her take it from there.
Thank you. Yes, I'm excited for this also. The funding comes through the Oasis, which is a state agency, through the opioid abatement settlement funds, through my office, which is the local governing unit. So Oasis and opioid funding will pretty much cover this entire project for both police and fire. Just by the nature of their work, police and firefighters are more susceptible to developing opioid addictions. When you think of the physicality of their job, the extra gear and uniform and what they have to carry and what they have to do physically, they're more susceptible to potential injury, as well as acute or chronic pain, oftentimes which is treated with opioids. On top of that, you have their continued and repeated exposure to traumatic events. Every day that they are working, they're responding to calls that are unpredictable. They have very high-stress jobs, and we couple mental health with the physical demands of the job, coupled with, you know, the potential for high risk. These disciplines are at higher risk for developing dual diagnoses, which is mental health and opioid addiction. So by us getting ahead of the curve and developing this wellness program and doing check-ins, you know, it will allow for firefighters and officers to just be able to share what's on their minds, that they can get that out instead of keeping it in. If you keep it in, and it just, it just grows, and then that's when real problems start to be created. So it needs to be addressed more in the moment. I'll have specific and certified counselors assigned to this program that are culturally competent, so that they understand the work that these two professions do in these two departments, so I think it'll be really good.
A good part of it.
Just one correction on the MOU. In the sign-up sheet, it's got Genesee City Council. Should be the Canadian City Council, I think.
Very good.
Script news there.
Yep.
So I mean, I ran through the other one kind of quickly, that's the only one that jumped out, I mean, so. But I think it's worthwhile. How does the general population of employees feel about this?
So I discussed it with our union representation, they're not opposed to this. Obviously, it's something new and unique, although there are other departments that are doing it. Specifically, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office actually has their own program in-house where they hire, I don't know, you know, the number three or four clinicians.
Yeah, that we're bringing twenty-four-seven essentially run by Dr. Kim Butler, who would go in and visit, so you have a program run. So this is something that's popping up, I think, all over the state and across the country.
Yeah, like I said, there'll be a period where it's just getting the officers, firefighters accustomed to that person that's with them, and then breaking down that barrier, having some conversations. It's not a fitness-for-duty type thing or anything like that, it is really just adding a support mechanism for our staff and outlet at some point in time. One of the biggest things climbing in our field is suicide. And unfortunately, officers are seeing that there is, there's no other out, and we wanna do everything we can to wrap the services around what they need. If something comes up or there is a need for further services or treatment, those are discussions of all.
The suicide rate for firefighters is about eighteen per one hundred thousand. The average rate is thirteen per one hundred thousand. Five hundred and fifty officers die by suicide every year. And dispatch makes up one percent of the overall suicide rate, which is too many.
Well, the fire department's been doing like the debriefing for years, and the police department's late to the game on that. So this is another step in that direction. I think it's a positive step in the right direction to have that, I mean, to buoy your attention, you know, just a whole bunch of things that could spill into the family. So I think it's a positive thing to identify these things and provide support services way before they get to a critical level. So this is the time to do it.
Chief, is there a fear of confidentiality being betrayed?
Is there any confidentiality being betrayed?
Is there a fear of this? Is this a possible roadblock?
Well, I guess it is a possible roadblock. I mean, these are the conversations we have to have with our staff to let them know that they're to be open and honest. Anything that they say with the individual that's with them is covered under confidentiality. I'm not looking for any feedback at all. I don't want any details about anything, any of those conversations that take place. They truly, it's truly just to support our system for them.
It's not therapy.
It's not therapy.
We're not taking, it's not therapy that's taking place on the ride-alongs. It's really an opportunity for firefighters and officers to just talk about maybe the scene that they just left, or what happened to them, you know, a couple days ago, and how it kind of, you know, you know, felt to the family and that they're under significant stress. They're at high risk of developing so many different medical, mental health, substance use. So if somebody can, if somebody can sit in a car with a firefighter or a police officer and they can just start talking about it freely, then that helps.
Yeah, I mean. You know, I personally know of an officer some years back, not from Batavia, but a great guy. He was an army officer and the guard and everything else. Went home one day, started shooting out the window, police showed up, and he said he committed suicide. No one in the department saw it coming, no one saw it coming, you know. So this could be a very good program.
Yeah, I think it's a very good program, and it's been successful in the places that it's been done before. I think it's very powerful, and our realtor's kind of mental health, because this is somebody that I can call that we don't teach us.
I'm already here.
Like, what's this, what are you having? As long as it isn't eight-thirty in the.
So are you gonna write, are you gonna sit in the chief's office and debrief the chief? It's miles away, and it's all stressed out there in budget time or something that you can do.
Whoa, 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 hey. Watch out, time.
When Josh and Sean are doing their budget, they might need a little support assistance.
I need that assistance, too.
Especially that two-point-five-million-dollar ladder truck, that's gonna be stressful.
Two-point-five? How'd it go up three hundred thousand? Five minutes went by and it went up three hundred thousand.
So is there any other questions we have for this?
Mr. President, as you noticed, the fire chief had the foresight under the slide analysis under threats, city council.
No, if you read that, it said, will the same supportive city council be around long enough to implement these changes? So as things change and people change out, then things can go in different directions.
That was an abridged version, but you were not very far from the truth when they mentioned threats, is council turnover can happen and they know they have support.
They can go in a totally different direction.
Totally going in a different policy.
Absolutely. For whatever reasons. That's always been a fear as a city employee, myself, that's always been a concern, is the inconsistency that occurs when too much of a changeover comes over in leadership, whether it be police chief, fire chief, or council. It does domino down and cause an effect on the employees, and you want to minimize it as much as possible.
There's only so much room on a piece of paper, writing all that down, so I had to sort it out.
Any other questions on that?
No.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move the MOU to the business meeting for a vote? First-Due Software Budget Amendment?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city council approved the purchase of First-Due in the last fiscal year, and an accounting for this year's payment for the software needs to be made. Eric, you want to explain more?
Yeah, I mean, that's the net out of it. If you guys recall back in, I think it was January, we approved the purchase of a five-year agreement with First-Due to enhance our software package for the fire department.
To my knowledge, they're very happy with it, and it's working great. However, because of the way that it is and the fact that it is software, it can't be a capital purchase, so we have to account for it year in, year out. The way the timing worked, the contract came across after we passed the budget, so it was not in there for this year particularly. So we'll just have to go back in and account for that. And then going forward for the next few fiscal years till the five years is up, it'll be part of the actual budget and show up in the administrative resource.
It makes sense that the first one would be not necessarily perfect timing, so after that, we'll know for the next four years on budget and get proper amount. Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move the budget amendment for First-Due Software to tonight's business meeting for a vote? Does it move? And the Genesee County MOU for the old water tower land.
Yes, thank you. The Genesee County Department of Public Works has requested a temporary access agreement to use the old water tank parcel of land outside the Genesee County courthouse for a staging area for two construction projects, one being the engine house, the other construction project being their new electric charging stations that they're putting up in their own area parking by the courthouse. So in the packet, you have an MOU with the county plus two access agreements that will allow the county and the county's contractors to use that parcel of land on a temporary basis.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, are we in consensus then to move that to tonight's business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion for adjournment, Mr. Beale. Seconded by Mr. Pritchard. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beale?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Baikowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, a call to order the business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the June twenty-twenty-four financials. Any questions, concerns, or additions or remissions? We'd like to progress on those. Okay, so are we on consensus to accept and approve the June twenty-twenty-four financials? So those are approved. You've also been given a copy of the July twenty-twenty-four minutes for meetings held in July. Any questions or concerns or remissions, or anything you'd like to add or subtract from those minutes? Okay, so are we all in consensus to approve the July twenty-twenty-four minutes? We have several agenda items, we'll assign those now. Ninety, twenty-twenty-four, the Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems for the Verizon Wireless. I guess, I, what is this one there? That's not in the same order. Yeah, the Verizon Wireless.
Verizon Wireless, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. It's just a long way you said.
Yeah.
Verizon Wireless. Any, who wants that one? Ninety-one, twenty-twenty-four, the GoArt for the special permission, I assume is for the alcohol. Mr. Richmond? Ninety-two, twenty-twenty-four, the school district for MacArthur Park lease. Mr. McGinnis? Ninety-three, twenty-twenty-four, fire department adjustment for the grant. Mr. Schmidt? Ninety-four, twenty-twenty-four, the D&amp;H paving for sidewalks. Mr. Byakowski? Ninety-five, 2024, the Jackson Square Wayfinding Signing Projects. We're going to reject the bids on that. Mr. McGinnis? Ninety-six, 2024, the opioid abatement settlement funds for the purpose of a public safety wellness program. Mr. Schmidt? Ninety-seven, 2024, the software for the fire department. Mr. Bealie? Ninety-eight, 2024, the water tower agreement. Mr. Bealie? It's the land for the water towers, I would ask you. Okay, back to the top. City Attorney, what do you have to report?
Yes, Council President, members of council remain busy. Over the last month or so, we've been working on various contract matters, public enforcement matters by different category. Tax foreclosure as well as counsel to the departments, the city manager's office, the assistant city manager's office. I would also note, we've assisted the police department in a new category of matter recently, which has to do with extreme risk protection orders. Without getting into granular detail, this was a part of the SAFE Act 2, I believe. The police department in recent months has had to deal with this on a few occasions. It's a civil matter in state Supreme Court where an order is required, and ultimately a hearing is held relative to removal of firearms from individuals who present a risk. The one the police department has had the need to do that, we've been asked to and assisted them in that. So, that is a new matter. We've also assisted city manager's office and departments with wastewater treatment plant matters in recent months. That's, that's generally some of the things we've worked on in recent times.
Any questions for the city mayor? Please, city manager?
Thank you, Council President. Just to note, Councilmember Bealie for Resolution 98, if you wouldn't mind reading the actual title of the resolution instead of the agenda, I think the title of the resolution is just slightly more accurate than the agenda.
I don't have it.
Oh.
I just have the short form.
Okay, I'll bring it up to you. So, manager's update, Brett Frank has officially finished his last day with the city of Batavia as an on-site employee. He's continuing to work remotely Tuesdays and Thursdays to assist the superintendents and myself during the transition. We did have calls with him last week, so we did put about five hours in, which was good. I've taken over along with Scott Allen and Tom Phillips' help, the DPW department, which is extremely busy and looking to get even busier with some paving coming up that Scott's crew will be doing. Good news, the city was awarded 452,000 for ash tree management throughout the Urban and Community Forestry Grant by the U.S. Forest Service. It'll be utilized to execute a maintenance plan for our street trees, preserve healthy trees by removing diseased and dying trees, and planting new trees. We'll be planting about 1,000 new trees in wards five and six, and a portion of ward two and three as defined by the disadvantaged zone related to the grant. So, that was just awarded. We'll be getting that project underway. We have three years to execute on the entire project.
Rachel, can we get a press release on that? I have several constituents that are asking about that.
Sure, absolutely.
It would be very helpful.
Happy to do so. The city is continuing to work with the DEC on an update of our speed east permit as well as the town of Batavia to update our wastewater treatment plant agreement. We are looking to do, create an MOU or an MOA with the town of Batavia to continue to move forward the new, or the purchase of 350,000 gallons per day, in addition, putting in new rates and block tiered rates with the town. We hope to have something to council in September. This will allow the city to then revoke or rescind their secret challenge to H.B. Hood, so that project hopefully can move forward in the community after that, that agreement moves forward. Income survey is underway for Pearl Street, so we will have, anytime we do a CBDG grant, we do have income surveys that need to go out to show low to moderate income households and eligibility. And for the Pearl Street Water Project, which is estimated at 3.4 million, we really would like the assistance of CBDG to complete that project. And the last thing is that we are hiring for an HR and DPW director at this time. So, if you know anyone that's interested, please have them get their resumes in.
So. Any questions?
What?
Soon.
Now.
Now.
Yesterday.
Any questions for the city mayor? Okay, unfinished business?
Thank you for running that up there.
New business. Ninety, 2024, Mr. Twitchell?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the city council president to execute a fourth amendment to the lease agreement with Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems of Allentown Incorporated doing business as Verizon Wireless, successor interest to New York RSA Number Three Cellular Partnership.
Second to the vote, Mr. Twitchell? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Resolution 91, 2024, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to grant special permission to the Batavia Business Improvement District for GOHART Street Fair Events.
Second to the vote, Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 92, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to renew a lease agreement with the, with the Batavia City School District for the use of building at MacArthur Park.
Second to the vote, Mr. Schmidt? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 95, 2024, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to reject all bids for contract for the Jackson Square Wayfinding signage project.
Second to the vote, Mr. Guy? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 96, 2024, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to accept Genesee County LGU opioid abatement settlement funds in the amount of $18,000 for the purpose of establishing a public safety wellness program.
Second to the vote, Mr. Twitchell?
Yes.
Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 98, 2024, Mr. Bealie, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to honor a MOU with Genesee County on a temporary access agreement with contractors for use of land formerly occupied by the city water tower on Elegant Street.
Second to the vote, Mr. Schmidt? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bealie?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Motion to end the session.
What? Oh, you said, give me a few minutes.
Oh, I didn't know when you wanted to do that. You want to talk about the parking issue?
Yeah.
Then go for it.
Okay, I'll be very brief. First, I'd like to commend the police department and code department. They've been busy. It's astounding since the first of the year, they've handed out 905 tickets. And the big problems, and I've been hearing from some people, there's been overnight parking in the streets, parking in yards, you know, on improved surfaces, front lawns, and parking over sidewalks. So, I have a feeling sometimes maybe there's more, it's a council and a community, we could be doing like, putting, putting together a one-sheet handout, giving it to all the realtors, because there's a transit society, and all that comes. They live here, work here for a while, and move on. There's some other causes, and some people are just ignoring everything. They just, they've never lived in a city before, and they don't know how to respect the neighbors. So, I think some public info might be a good way of doing it. Enforcement's always, you know, unfortunately, it has to happen, but it's a last resort. And one of the things I've seen myself recently is people parking over the sidewalks consistently, repeat offenders. And the newest thing now is park one foot over the sidewalk, which you still can't get down. If you're with a, you know, I have some neighbors myself that are handicapped, and they walk with walkers, and one fellow walking with crutches and all that. So, it's, they have to go out into the street, go around the car, and all the rest of that. And the newest problem that's been cropping up, and it's really prevalent on West Maine, is on people riding e-bikes on the sidewalks. And when you see one of these things coming at you at 25 miles an hour, you, they're running pedestrians right off the sidewalk. So, I think we need to step up doing something on that. Thank you again, Chief, for your men. I know they're out there busy and trying to do all this stuff, and the code guy, he's got to, he ripping his hair out, so.
Hey, anyone else? Do you want to take a seat in executive session?
Thank you, Council President. RAS Article 7, Section 105, 1F, the public officers now permits the legislative body of this valley to enter executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, depony, disbursement, suspension, dismissal, or removal of particular